Hey, the roof's live.
Okay, awesome. Well, we're gonna call the meeting December eighteenth, twenty twenty four board meeting to order. I'll ask each commissioner to please respond with a here when I call out their name. Commissioner Doan?
I believe Commissioner Doan is in the room next door.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Commissioner Isaac?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
I will now close the regular session of the board to convene an executive session. Will this quarter, please read the executive session script?
Certainly. An executive session of the board is called under O R S one nine two dot six six zero two E to conduct deliberations to negotiate real property transactions. One nine two six six zero two H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. One nine two six six zero two I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of this public body and uh, sorry, wow, that one. A public officer who does not wish to request an open hearing and one nine two six six zero two F to consider information or records that are examined by law from public inspection.
I will now reconvene our regular board meeting. We will now hear reports from the chief executive officer and management staff.
If you could be one more favorable. Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Fisher, commissioners. We're glad to have Commissioner Don on line with us now. Got that technical difficulty. The C E O's report tonight's gonna be pretty short, actually, but I do have some pictures. We were out at the treatment plant site today. I'm always envious of Dave Kraska's photos, so we're gonna incorporate some into our announcements time, but before we get there, we've got a bit of a good news story on our work with with Washington County that we wanted to highlight here. So Washington County is doing a forty million dollar project to replace some bridges at the intersection of Cedar Mill, I'm sorry, Walker and Murray over Cedar Mill Creek and North Johnson Creek, gonna widen it. We have a very important, critical forty-two inch pipeline transmission line that goes goes through that area, and it's gonna have to be relocated out of the construction site. Uh, so our staff met with the county project staff last last week to share our concerns about the project construction, starting in the summer fall of twenty twenty five, noted to increase the risk for our integration with the wild water supply system. Uh, T B W D requires uninterrupted service on this line in twenty twenty six. Uh, the county agreed, actually, to delay the disruption to the forty-two inch critical main that we're talking about here until late twenty twenty six at the earliest. And just thought this was a really great example of local governments working together to serve the citizens and to reduce risk to our very important project. Here is a graphic kind of shows the the work, and if you have questions about that, I'll I'll pass it to Pete to to answer those, but that's the area which we were just talking about. So excellent outcome for for all of us. I'll give you a quick update on Taylor's Ferry project, and actually, we're lucky tonight to have both Pete and as well as Nick Augustus. Nick is the project manager on this on this project, so if you have questions, we'll bring him in. We're gonna show some pictures of the site as it goes through demolition. So here we are back in November fifth. This is the old Metzger office building that existed along with the two storage reservoirs there, and of course, that is the FEMA, we have the FEMA grant that's gonna assist replacing the infrastructure that we have there. So that's uh, in uh, November, and here is destruction that we have as of December twenty twenty four, December tenth. And looking at the building itself, uh, back on uh, November twenty seventh, I guess that would have been right about the time that we had Thanksgiving, some of the work that's gone on there to get us to the point that we are right now. So the project is going along quickly. Uh, great progress to be made there, and if you have any questions, we do have the right people here to give you some highlights on what's going on at Taylor's Ferry. Any questions for?
I I drove by, I think, on the ninth of the tenth, and so I saw Jim?
Even captions.
Okay.
I I drove by, I think, on the ninth or tenth and saw the expression going on. It was pretty amazing to see.
Yeah. It's gonna be an important piece of infrastructure that we need as we get to go off the limit.
Well, I'm sad to see that building go.
Yeah, uh, it's.
It was an awful building, but.
But it was our building.
That's right. It was our awful building.
That was the original headquarters for.
For Metzger.
For Metzger.
For Water District, and we let Pacific Northwest Section E W W use it for a number of years as well, so it's been important.
Served more than its value.
Yeah. And it's gonna be put to better use uh, right now. Uh, moving right along here, we'll give you a quick up. Obviously, the holidays are upon us. I said a little thin on the C E O report tonight. We will be closed on the twenty-fifth and January first. Nobody's surprised there. And then last item here for me is that starting tomorrow, I'll be on vacation through New Year's. Uh, during the time that I'm out, Pete, our C O, will be A I C for the C E O. And with that, I'm gonna turn over to Justin Carlton, who's gonna present tonight's director's report.
I'll go this way.
Go this way?
Yep.
Short route.
Thank you, President Fisher. Good evening, commissioners. So with the auditors presenting tonight on the financial performance of the district for last fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, I thought it'd be an appropriate time to give a mid-biennium financial update focusing more kind of on the the financial performance from an operations perspective as it relates to our budget. I'm sure you all read the draft annual comprehensive financial report cover to cover this week. Um, this gives a less of a overview from a generally accepted accounting principle, financial statement perspective, and more kind of our day-to-day operations. So starting with um, our operating expenses, um, through the fiscal year, we have a nine point four million dollar favorable operating variance. So what this means is that the operating revenues have covered the operating expenses uh, and that our operating expenses are below what we have budgeted. So from the materials and services category, we currently, as of June thirty, we have an eight point three million dollar positive variance, so below budget. And on the personal services category, we have a one point one million dollar positive variance, so below budget there as well. Looking at that cumulative and where the trend line is heading for the rest of the biennium, and it's pretty consistent with what we see in years past, where starting off the biennium, we're pretty close to where we anticipate, and then throughout the biennium, you see kind of a little bit of a differentiation as expenditures tend to be a little less than what was initially budgeted. On the capital outlay side, um, we have a positive variance of uh, two hundred and fifty-six point one million. Of that number, two hundred and twenty point eight million is related to the W W S S, and the remaining amount is for other projects within the district. That two hundred and twenty million is a little misleading, though, because of the way, you may recall that we have the district share of the W W S S, and then we actually appropriate that within our capital improvement fund, but then we have the whole W W S S fund itself, and it appropriates the entire amount as well. So there's a little bit of duplication there, so that number is slightly inflated. If you were just to look at um, for T B W D's portion of W W S S, it's a eighty-three point six million positive variance. So you've heard Dave talk about where we're at with the the progress on the treatment plant, some of the other projects, um, so I won't go into details of what's driving that, but um, and then if you're looking at the large spike that occurred in June, uh, as is uh, our practice in all years past, we're required to accrue expenditures to the correct fiscal period, and so what we typically see is as invoices roll in past June for activities that occurred prior to June, and we have these large spikes in the month of June, and so that's not uncommon. And there you can see the picture on a cumulative basis through where we're at for the biennium. On the revenue side, um, we current, as of June thirtieth, we actually had a three point one million dollar favorable water sales variance, uh, so two point three million on the volume side and basically on trend for the fixed side. Uh, if you're looking at the man or the month and review report for this month, that variance has actually switched. We think some of that might be associated with some timing associated with billings. Um, so we're basically on trend uh, for that for the fiscal year. And then on the positive side of things, uh, you've seen in the monthly uh, the month and review reports, we've talked a lot about interest revenues. So um, as the anticipated spend of the W W S S and other C I P projects has been slower than what we initially forecasted, we've been able to take advantage of the high interest rate environment and really um, done pretty well with our portfolio earnings over the last year. Also a positive story on the uh, system development charge side, so a positive variance there as well. Um, obviously not the same magnitude on the interest side, but I'm still a positive picture nonetheless. Some of the financial challenges that we're uh, having to consider as we prepare the budget for the next biennium, um, so it's headwinds in our our face or things about the cost of purchase water for the W W S S. So the second year of the the next biennium, we will be in operations and we'll be purchasing water from the W W S S, given that this is a whole new system, a whole new plan, um, whole new uh, arrangement in terms of how we work with our partner, the city of Hillsborough. It's gonna be challenging to anticipate exactly what those costs are gonna look like in the future, um, so we're gonna need some flexibility in how we budget for that, and that's something that we're gonna be paying very, very close attention to. On a positive side, um, we just had the financial procedures adopted uh, for the W W S S at the last uh, W W S board meeting, and we were able to to set up a cost allocation structure where uh, there was a better alignment with fixed costs being allocated based on capacity ownership. So that was a really big uh, important factor that we really wanted to carry forward and were able to to get that accomplished. So thank you, Commissioner Doug or Duggan, for helping get that through. Uh, collections on our long-term outstanding balances. So uh, one of the things that we've seen is a trend sort of post-COVID is the longer people are in the cycle of not paying their bills, the harder it is uh, for them to to get out of that hole, and that's kind of common sense as well. Um, so that's something we're paying close attention to, and we're looking at ways that we can help reduce those long-term outstanding balances and get people current and then help prevent them from falling uh, into that long-range outstanding balance where it becomes harder and harder to collect. Uh, our PERS rates, um, not surprising, have have, will be impacted next biennium, so the rates have come out. Uh, for our tier one and tier two, we're looking at an increase of thirty-one point seven percent, uh, so the rate will go up, the rate of payroll will go up to nineteen point six percent uh, for our tier one and tier two employees. For officer, we're seeing a forty-six point three percent increase, uh, so that rate of payroll will go up to just shy of seventeen percent. And then our healthcare costs um, coming with a twenty-nine percent increase starting uh, in calendar year twenty twenty-five. But not wanting to end on a sour note, I do uh, want to say there's some tailwinds that we're also dealing with, uh, so we have a strong cash position as of June period, we had three hundred million, three hundred eighty million dollars in cash investments. A lot of that was the proceeds from the bond, uh, revenue bonds that we issued in June, um, but we have the the financing is complete for the W W S S, and so we're in a really good position now to manage the the remaining work uh, and and maintain those strong cash positions going into the new biennium. Uh, interest rates remain relatively high um, relative to to my career span, not so much to some others who've seen interest rates double digits, but uh, for our portfolio earnings in the month of November at five percent, uh, that was a really strong uh, number for what I've seen in my time here at the district. So uh, we're, the the federal open market committee announced a a rate increase or decrease uh, today, I believe, so we're we're seeing the the curve start to ease back down. Uh, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good, so we're kind of able to take advantage of those those high balances that we have, and then as our balances decline, the rates seem to be declining kind of in in uh, lockstep with that, so it's been fortunate for our position. Uh, focus strategic priorities. Um, so what I mean by that is you've heard Paul come to the board and talk about some of the things that we're not gonna do and and really maintaining a strong focus on what our current priorities are. Um, so that helps from a financial perspective, because there's projects that we're putting out in time, we're able to smooth out our financial forecast picture a little bit with those things, but also the things that we are focused on, I think, get delivered more efficiently, more effectively, at a higher rate of quality, uh, because we are narrowing our focus to to those key priorities. And then lastly, long-term water rate stability. So this is obviously caveated as we go through our our financial planning process and our budgeting processes here, uh, but we do update our uh, our long-term financial forecast regularly, and we are still projecting long-term uh, rates to be uh, within inflationary adjustments for the foreseeable future. That's where we're looking as of uh, June thirty, twenty twenty-four, and I'm I've been answering questions, yeah?
Well, there are no other questions that concludes the report of the C E O and management staff.
Well, we will now go to Commissioner Communications. The commissioners will now report on recent meetings attended. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Duggan.
Okay. Uh, on the third of this month, I attended the board work session. On the fifth, um, we had the the wild water supply system board meeting, an execs executive session. It was a a a long session, but as as Justin just commented, we we adopted new financial uh, procedures and a number of other items that have been been talked about previously. Uh, on the tenth, I attended the Washington County C P O number one and number seven combined meeting where we received updates. Uh, uh, Justin and Lindsay of our communication staff did an excellent job in fielding questions and and going over issues that were unresolved from the November meeting, and again, job well done, communication staff, thank you. Uh, on the eleventh, I attended the Metro Impact uh, meeting where I served as the alternate for special districts, uh, and it was important uh, that they get as many people there because they hadn't had a quorum uh, since August, I believe, so we were able to get a whole bunch of approvals done. Uh, the rest of the meeting was spent uh, with the Chair Lynn Peterson talking about housing funding and all the challenges that Metro's looking at with uh, housing issues. And then there are also times spent uh, giving recommendation to the Metro Council regarding a quest from the city of Portland to change the regional plan regarding rezoning of industrial land around Montgomery Park area uh, in uh, northwest Portland. I was very interested to hear about everything that was going in involving that, but I think that the proposal that was given uh, was was well done. There was an objection or a concern expressed by the city Beaverton's representative uh, a counselor taken on regarding loss of industrial land, but considering that the immediate area, uh, the only rezone that's taking place is uh, west of four oh five or or uh, well to the to the west and doesn't involve the land that previously been included near uh, the Fremont Bridge and close to the river. So it's just the area around uh, Montgomery Park with the smaller blocks um, and uh, that that is being rezoned to allow more than just industrial. Uh, I I thought it was very interesting to hear all that being talked about, considering the concern regionally about uh, industrial land uh, and and the lack of of industrial land. Uh, last night, I attended the Washington County uh, Committee for Citizen Involvement Meeting where Commissioner Roy Rogers uh, did sort of a swan song. Uh, he is leaving Washington County Commission at the end of the month. He had his last meeting as a commissioner uh, yesterday, and then came to the the C C I uh, to talk about uh, his uh, his feeling of accomplishment and uh, the things that he he wished that he had been able to to help uh, facilitate more, especially transportation issues down in the Sherwood area, but uh, it was very uh, a very nice meeting and glad to see uh, uh, Roy uh, being satisfied and and getting the accolades that he he deserves. Uh, the other, rest of the meeting was spent about the C P O modernization program and then tonight's meeting. Sorry for going on 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 those meetings, but I think it was very important to to hear regionally what what's happening.
Commissioner Isaac?
Uh, much briefer, so our work our work session on the third and tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Sanders?
Ditto. Uh, also the meeting with uh, Paul setting the agenda, but that happens on the same day as the work session, so.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes, I had a meeting with you and I had a meeting with uh, Paul, and then the work session and then tonight's meeting.
Well, I, aside from the aforementioned meetings, on the twenty-first of November, I attended the State of the West Side, the West Side Economic Alliance uh, luncheon, where we heard from industry on housing, transportation, and other issues impacting the the west side and what they hope to help advocate for in the the coming legislative session. Then on the twenty-second, I attended a reception uh, with Congresswoman Andrea Slenis where she covered, you know, the impacts of the election. There wasn't uh, there were some things still up in the air about what majorities, minorities would be in Congress and what she hopes to do in over the next two years uh, since being re-elected. And then I've attended on the tenth of December, my, one of my bimonthly check-ins with the C E O to discuss uh, issues about the district. And then on the eleventh, I met with one of our C F M lobby team about a potential a P F O S related legislation coming up in the long session. And then on the thirteenth of December, I met with Crystal Weston from the Oregon Environmental Council about a actual piece of legislation about P F O S and then tonight's meeting.
Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? Okay. Moving to public comment, public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment time will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons tonight for public comment?
That's me, yeah.
Okay. Beyond consent agenda, consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented? I move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Now we'll move on to our business agenda. So Justin Carlton will be discussing our annual comprehensive financial report.
And President Fisher and commissioners, so I'm actually gonna be turning the presentation over to Julie Desmoni with Moss Adams, and she will be presenting the audit results for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Perfect, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay? Just wanna check that.
You got you, Julie, thanks.
Perfect. Um, so I'm pleased, and I apologize, for some reason, my camera is currently grayed out and I can't seem to turn it on, but you're gonna hear my voice. I'm also pleased to have with me tonight, we've got Laurel, who's a senior manager on the audit, I Day, who is the manager on the audit, and Chris, who is the senior on the audit. Uh, I Day and Laurel will be helping me with this presentation, uh, but this is your dedicated team. Obviously, there's a lot more people behind this team uh, that that were part of the engagement team. I think one, the person I I wanna point out to the board is Keith Simovic, a very important role within Moss Adams within our profession is what we call our cold review or Q C reviewer. He is not otherwise associated with the district and is required to take a look at our risk assessment, our planning stages into our final audit work paper preparation. Uh, he looks over the the act for to make sure that it is complete and accurate and looks over all of our final conclusions. Uh, so Keith has completed his uh, his his duties as part of the Q C reviewer. Uh, we also have a secondary review on the schedule of federal expenditures. Uh, this is a review that that it simulates what was called a federal desk review that has been completed and signed off as well. So after this meeting tonight, if there's no questions, we'll be able to take our draft stamps off of the financial statements and go ahead and issue those first thing in the morning. I'm gonna actually turn this over to Laurel. Laurel's gonna talk a little bit about the nature of the services provided.
Thanks, Julie. So what's this on the slide here is the nature of the services we provided to Toaltown Valley Water District for six thirty, twenty twenty-four. So we did the independent auditors report on the individual and combined statements. This is a report of independent auditors, which says that we conducted the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and standards applicable to government auditing standards. Going hand in hand with this report is number three there. We have a report of independent auditors on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. This is where we are considering internal control over financial reporting and using that as a basis to design our audit procedures, but wanted to clarify that's not to and express an opinion on the effectiveness of T B W D's internal controls. The other report that you will mention, you'll notice, is number five, and this is related to the federal expenditures that Julie referred to, and this is the report that we have to do anytime a single audit is required. So that is when the entity expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds in a given year. Um, outside of this, the other services we provide each and every year are assistance with and technical review of the financial statements to ensure that they're in compliance with generally accepted auditing standards. Uh, we make sure that the disclosures are in line with the Oregon municipal corporations and minimum standards for audits, and then we also issue a letter for the communications to those charged with governance. Later on in this presentation, I Day will talk a little bit about what will be in that letter, but that is another deliverable you will see once we issue the audit. One item I did want to mention is I know the board received a draft of the final version of the financial statements, and one item that is not in there is we did end up having a change in the classification of restricted versus unrestricted net position. So restricted net position ended up decreasing and unrestricted net position ended up increasing. The total amount stayed the same, but just wanted to call that out, since I know that's not in the version that the board has in front of them. Next slide, please. So up here is our significant audit areas. So these are areas that change each year depending on the operations of the district, and I just wanted to clarify, this isn't everything we look at during our audit, but some of the key areas we wanted to discuss with the board today. The first area is work orders. So for work orders, we are really concerned with the classification of those. So we'll test controls surrounding work orders to ensure that they're appropriately approved, that they're closed efficiently, and we'll also look at the controls surrounding the monitoring of those costs to ensure there's proper allocation of labor, overhead, costs of materials. Additionally, during our substantive testing, we will look at a listing of open work orders as of year end to ensure that they're appropriately classified. So this is where we're really wanting to make sure that the work orders are appropriately in construction work in process versus in service to ensure that they're being depreciated as needed. I T and security and access is an area that we continue to have as a key focus in our audits year after year, and so this is, we'll look at the util, at the district's I T security and access to ensure that proper safeguards are in place, to ensure that all employees have appropriate access based on their positions, as well as looking at items such as passport requirements. Um, and we'll also focus in on areas such as change management to ensure that proper controls are in place when system upgrades occur or when systems are changed. Another area is the investments and component unit reporting. So this is an area we'll work with management on each year to ensure that the joint joint venture investments are properly recorded, as well as looking at the component units. So for example, in the financial statements, you note that W W S S is classified as a component unit of T B W D. Management override of controls is an area that is a presumed fraud risk on every single one of our audit engagements. Um, as, and so this isn't an area that is specific to T B W D, you just wanted to call that out out to the board. It's an area that we look at for every single audit engagement we have, and to address this, we will focus in on internal controls. We perform journal entry procedures to look at all journal entries tested during the year and use a risk-based audit approach to select the sample to test to ensure that they were appropriately approved, that they had appropriate support, and they were for an appropriate business purpose. We'll also perform what we call fraud inquiries with different individuals throughout the organization. And this is where we're just wanting to touch base with them, see if they have any concerns or if there's anything that they would like us to look into further, to just make sure we're touching base with different departments throughout the organization. The last area that we focus is a significant audit area for us, is compliance with federal laws and regulations. So this kind of goes back to that single audit we performed this year, since TBWD did expend more than $750,000 in federal awards in 2024, as well as the Oregon minimum standards. Any questions on this slide before we move on? Okay, so now kind of to the exciting part, we kind of can get to say, happy to report that we plan on issuing an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is what you're wanting to see. So great job to Justin, David, and their teams. This just really emphasizes all the hard work that goes into the audit each and every year. Along with that, for both the government auditing standards report, as well as the Oregon minimum audit standards report, no findings, as well as the single audit report. So all really good news for this year's audit, and we couldn't have done it without all of the help and assistance of your team. Next slide. So now I'll pass it on to Iday to kind of go through some of our required communications.
Thank you, Laurel. As Laurel mentioned, the audit standards require specific communication be made to those charged with governance. So you will see at the end of the audit what we refer to as the those charged with governance letter. And so just kind of wanting to summarize some of those key points that are included within that letter. First off, we have what is referred to as auditor responsibility. So what our responsibilities as the auditor includes, which it would, it includes providing an opinion on the financial statements, gaining an understanding of the internal controls, as well as then communicating any sort of significant matter that could have an impact to the financial statements to the board. And again, that's leveraging our professional judgment and kind of when the board would need to be looped in if there were any significant matters that arose based on our testing procedures. Next up, we have significant accounting policies are also required to be disclosed, which include for for the district would include pension liability, unbilled revenue, allowance for doubtful accounts, as well as recovery periods for the cost of plant. Next up, we also include within the letter, management judgments and accounting estimates, as well as if any audit adjustments or proposed adjustments were to arise during the year. And so just to kind of provide a high-level understanding, an audit adjustment would be would be proposed if through our testing procedures performed during the year, if any adjustments arose that exceeded our, what we call our proposed entry threshold, then it would be material to the financial statements and management would post those adjustments. A proposed adjustment is anything below this threshold, and again, would not be material to the financial statements as a whole. As such, for the current year, we had neither, so did want to highlight that. Next up, we have any sort of management consultation with other accountants would also be a required communication to the board if there were any disagreements with management or any difficulties performing the audit at all during the year. Next slide, please. Again, just just to summarize, we we had no audit adjustments, whether that be past audit adjustments or proposed. So wanted to to continue to highlight that for the current year. And again, just kind of a testament to to management's review of the financial statements and their thoroughness on on all the reconciliations performed throughout the year. As far as standards adopted in the current year, thankfully, there were no new standards that management had to adopt. The GASB is starting to slow down a little bit on some of these standards. Just to kind of reiterate the, you know, kind of big standards that came out over the last couple of years included GASB 87, which was leases, GASB 96, which is subscription-based IT services, as well as then GASB, GASB 94. And so although those standards have already been adopted, I do want to highlight that, you know, every year, management has to perform additional work and kind of review all of those agreements in place and ensure that they're properly recording that. So again, that that's also always a big undertaking just due to the the level of not only leases, but software is in place. So do want to want to highlight kind of the work that goes on behind the scenes for that as well. Next slide, please. A little preview for kind of what's to come from the GASB. So there are a couple new standards here on the docket. First off, we have GASB 101, which would go into effect for fiscal years ending in 2025. But what this will require management to do is evaluate any compensated absence, which includes sick time or other salary-related payments having to do with leave, you know, any sabbaticals, and so a liability would need to be recorded on the books for those items. Next up, we have GASB 102, which is certain risk disclosures. This will require management to not only disclose any sort of concentration or constraints, but also management's kind of plan to mitigate those prior to the issuance of the audit. And again, that'll be effective for June 15th, 2024. Next up, we have GASB 103, so financial statement reporting improvements. So what the GASB is hoping to accomplish with this is really kind of having management focus on the why behind a lot of the MDNA activity. Again, I think TBWD does a great job of really kind of harnessing the why. We're seeing changes from one year to the other and kind of what's leading to those items. But again, the GASB is just hoping to standardize that and hoping that other government entities kind of follow suit and provide further detail on on any potential changes. Again, really kind of emphasizing the why behind the activity during the year. And then lastly, we have GASB 104, disclosures of certain capital assets. Again, this is more of a disclosure-based GASB here, and it's, what it'll do is it'll require certain types of capital assets to be disclosed separately. Again, just, the GASB is hoping to provide more of a standardized uniformity behind a lot of these disclosures. And so this is just additional guidance on that. Next slide, please. Do you want to give an acknowledgement to Justin, David, Kristen, and just the rest of the TBWD team? As as Laurel mentioned, we talked to, you know, various members throughout the district, whether that be IT, payroll, customer service, and everyone is more than welcoming and, you know, more than, more more than responsive and really, really wants to help us along the audit. And again, the audit is a, you know, we start with interim back in in June, so it's a couple, couple-month process here. And so it's a big undertaking, and again, wouldn't be possible without everybody on the TBWD side team as well. Next slide, please. And then this is.
I think that, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, go for it, Julie.
Sorry, Iday.
No, you're good.
Well, I think that wraps up our our presentation. I will say, just one thought when Iday was going through all of those future, and one of the things that we are, I would say, not fighting, but trying to do is is really look at the length of the financial statements. And so far, I've not been successful in trying to get GASB to shorten. So you'll see that these are going to add pages and additional disclosures into the future. So we are working with the team just to, you know, any input back to the GASB on what is meaningful, especially coming from your chairs, is very helpful to us. So if you do have any considerations or anything you'd love to talk to us about in the future, we're here for you, and this is the contact slide where where we're available to talk to any of you. So I think now we're going to move into if any of the board members have any questions for the audit team, would be pleased to answer those at this time. Otherwise, that was our planned communications.
Questions from the board? Okay, well, I don't see any question, so. I think we will.
Thanks, Julie, and team. Just like to.
Thank you.
Note that unfortunately for them, again, this year, this presentation aligned with their return from American Samoa yesterday. So their troopers and God, I got this done, so really appreciate their effort. And I also want to highlight what they said about David Schick, our controller, Kristen Lee, our assistant controller, and the whole finance and accounting team. They're the ones that really do work. So it's a year of transition with Kristen stepping into a role and other staff adjusting. So team really delivered, really appreciate their efforts.
Okay, so do I have a motion in a second to accept the district's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2024 and 2023?
I move. A second?
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Justin. Boone, I believe you are next on our list. Findings for an exemption from competitive bidding for the Richard De Schmidt Willamette Supply Facility.
President Fisher, Commissioners, I'm going to hand this right to Nick Augustus. So Nick not only manages our entire capital improvement program, but also manages the highest-profile projects in that CIP. So he's going to talk about one of those tonight.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present the post-construction report. So quick agenda on here. We're going to recap why alternative delivery and why post-construction report. And so get that off the plate, but then talk through the chosen method on this project, recap the project, what we did, what we accomplished, show some results and an assessment of alternative delivery process, and then take any questions. So first off, why alternative delivery? So alternative delivery is an opportunity for us to collaborate with with contractors, with the design engineers, really try to gain the best value out of these fairly difficult projects. It's not for every project, but it can definitely help us on on certain projects, depending on the on the scope. We've had some lessons learned over the over the years of low bid on some challenging projects and and really want to take advantage of the experience that's out there to be able to help deliver the the projects. Alternative delivery allows us to get some feedback upfront from the contractors, figure out how they might approach different aspects of the project, and helps them really gain an understanding of what needs to happen so we can get the best best value out of it as we can. And then with any big project, there's always going to be some unknowns. And what I like about alternative delivery is it allows us to put risk in the hands of of the entity most able to handle those risks. So with alternative delivery, we have to present to the local contractor review board ahead of the project to gain approval for alternative delivery. And at the end, ORS 279C.355 requires a final report. So that's what brings us here today. The alternative delivery type we chose for this project was CMGC, construction manager, general contractor, sometimes known as CMAR. This is just a showing of a few different types of alternative delivery. We've used a couple of these. We're currently working on one project, the 189th Pump Station, that is progressive design build. So you'll see me back here probably in a year when we wrap that one up to give a post-construction report on that project. But the Richard De Schmidt Willamette Supply Facility, formerly known as the Farmington Road Booster Pump Station, also known for a time as the Farmington Fluoride and Flow Control Facility. And we'll get into a little bit why we've, we had a few different name changes. But a little bit of the background, and and you can see what we like is aerial photos of all these. It helps us get a sense of what the project looks like. But we only had one feed to the top of Cooper Mountain. And so this project originally was was set up to do a few different things. We wanted to be able to pump to the top of Cooper Mountain as a secondary feed. The 189th Pump Station, Goiáque Pump Station, was in need of upgrades. And so having a secondary feed would really help us be able to accomplish those upgrades. We also had the Willamette Supply coming in. This was going to be one of our entry points to the district. And so we needed a fluoride injection facility to to be able to properly bring in water, control the flow, and inject fluoride. And we just happened to be able to acquire this property and happened to be right in the exact location where we wanted it. So location, location, location turned out really well. And then one of the the challenges that we saw is is we got into designing and looking forward with the schedules was the construction of PLW 13 from the Willamette was going to coincide with construction on this site. And so a lot of contractors in small confined sites could spell difficulties. So we saw that as a challenge and 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 thought that alternative delivery could help us avoid some of those challenges. So phase one of the project, CMGC selection, we began the selection in December 2019. We received proposals, evaluated those, and then we were approximately 30% designed with Keller Associates was our design engineer. And immediately, once we had the CMGC selected and onboard, we incorporated them into the design meetings to get their estimations of the guaranteed maximum price, but also their approach to the overall construction. We, and this just kind of shows the the flow of that. We worked on design, we evaluated the the guaranteed maximum price. And then this project, we had a couple little changes. We got to 100% in that guaranteed maximum price, and it was a bit higher than we anticipated. And we started looking at different options, and rather than continue with that guaranteed maximum price, we went back to the drawing board with our with our overall scope and decided to take the pumping portion out of this project. And we established an agreement with the city of Beaverton, which would allow both of us to to use our pumping facilities and have an inner tie-up at the top of the hill. So it was mutually beneficial for city of Beaverton and Walton Valley Water District, and it allowed us to save a substantial amount of money. Go to that sheet. So our original estimate, we had the master plan estimate, which was a bit low. And then our our CIP budget was right around 10 million. And when we got the, got to 100% that guaranteed maximum price, we were closer to 16 million. And so we decided, you know, we we need to find something to do a little bit different. Final cost on the project was just over 8 million. If you add in the Kemmer inner tie of about 1.7 million, we came in just under 10 million, so under under the original CIP budget. And as far as the CMGC costs, pre-construction was 108,000. Construction was 6.6, sorry, 6, 6,689,304 dollars change. We did end up with a savings split, so that's one thing we write into the the contract of of some of these alternative delivery projects is they give us a guaranteed maximum price that we negotiate. We come to a fair agreement, what we think is going to be fair. And if they beat that that cost and come in lower, there's a 50-50 split. So it's beneficial for them to really work together and and really try to to look out for our interests as well as as there. So we did end up with a final change order of about $220,000 on this project. But with that, with the cost savings, we still came in under what we anticipated with their with their contract. And some of those changes, yeah, some of those changes included contaminated soils on the site that we had to dispose of. We had coordination with the Willamette Supply Contractor. Some of that change order actually was for costs incurred to have our contractor on site, which was Emery &amp; Sons. We had them finish off some of the work that. We had them finish off some of the work that that the adjacent contractor wasn't able to complete. And we did end up with no change to the overall contract. Looking at the the items that we need to consider for alternative delivery, there's fourteen different items that we go through, and and this is in the final report. We we go through each one of these and talk about the the benefits of each one. But really comes comes down to alternative delivery really helps us establish this this team environment. We get rapid feedback from the contractor of when we're considering different ideas, they can tell us if they're good ideas, bad ideas, or expensive ideas. And all it's really good feedback for us. We're able to have regular meetings with the the contractor and the engineer and establish that collaborative environment. The so Farmington Road Booster Pump Station in Discharge Main, like I said, we had some hundred percent GMP challenges. And we we ended up with a short redesign effort after we we had a pause to that. So it did extend the length of time that that we were out there, we're working on this project. But we did come in at the right cost. And we were able to celebrate this past spring of the with public event out there celebrating Richard De Schmitt, his contributions, and celebrate naming this facility after him. See, some of the the additional construction benefits mentioned working next to other contractors. So trying to establish a good working environment between the two contractors was very beneficial, knowing that we're able to select which contractor we wanted and have them early on know and understand the difficulties that they might encounter with the two contractors. And and they really did, they worked worked well together. Emery and Sons was able to handle the challenging soil conditions. We were able to dispose of properly the contaminated soils and really keep the project rolling. We did have some material delays and some permit inspection delays. And none of these did we see any any sort of change order just because of the good working environment we have with that. And one big highlight is we ended up with an adjacent roadway project, so not just our two contractors. The the county did a job out there where they overlaid the the street. And we were able to we we worked with them, we we were able to schedule our roadway restoration along with theirs. And so we saved about twenty thousand dollars in roadway restoration costs. And overall, it turned out really well. You can kind of see highlighted in in the pictures is kind of where the water comes from, where it goes. We've got a couple of different ways to to move water now at that site. Bringing water in from the Lamont and injecting fluoride, sending it to where where we need. That, are there any questions?
Pete, one comment. Every time the name Emery and Sons comes up, it's something positive. It has been for several years now. I think we've got a really good relationship with them to acknowledge that fact. That's it.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Well done.
Do they need to accept the report? Does the LCRV need to accept this report? Or it just it just says that we have to make the report to them. They might as well accept it. We're here. So so acting as the local contract review board, you can accept the report.
Don't we have to go into being the local contract review board separately?
Actually, I'm sorry, it's not a local contract review board. It's the board because it's your project now. The local contract review board acted on the on the findings to exempt it. And then it became yours, and now you get to accept it as part of your history of these projects.
Well, we will graciously accept the report. Sheriff Fisher, I hereby move that we as a board formally accept this final report and commendation to staff on job well done.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the all those opposed? Thank you. Now we will move on to Southwest Meadow Drive and Southwest Walker Road Pressure Regulator Valve Resolution of Need.
President Fisher, commissioners? Yes, so tonight I will talk about a resolution of need. The staff is is requesting that the board adopt. And I'll talk about an overview of the project that this is related to and why we need it. So we have a a critical pressure reducing valve vault. There's actually a couple of valves in this vault located near the intersection of Meadow and Walker Drive, near the north end of the Nike Campus. It's a critical piece of infrastructure between our very large four thirty-five pressure zone and the and the adjacent three eighty-five. The the sum of the area those two covers a vast majority of our service area. We've got the vault there now. It's in a difficult location to access. And we need to do some major work on those valves anyway. A lot of those, well, the the two in the vault have reached the end of their useful life. So we've got to do some major work, and it's a good opportunity to get that in a better location to do that. We looked around the area. We want to keep this facility close to this specific area because the further away we get means the more pipe we have to build to achieve that same function. And so what we're looking to do is acquire a permanent easement on a property and then move this vault to that site. So here's a map showing the existing configuration. We're we're here in the intersection of Meadow and Walker, as I said, and that's a really tough spot to work. So we have to set up traffic control. You have to access this just through a a small brown manhole, and it's very difficult to do work in that site. And so we're going to achieve a couple of different benefits by moving this. The site that's going to work best for this is about a hundred yards north of here, up Meadow Drive. And you can see a proposed configuration on the screen there. The red line would be new piping that gets down to that connection in Walker Road that we need to maintain. But we're just a short distance away to the north. The site that's going to work for the best of this, work the best for this need is located at at seven two five Southwest Meadow Drive. And it meets a couple of different important criteria for us. Like I said, being adjacent to the existing pipeline is really important. This site gets us out of the the roadway, so construction and access is a lot easier. And and there's a large enough area here that we did, we've identified that we can install a vault and then be able to go back in the in the future and set up permits. Here's another view of that that location. So it's currently developed as a as a multifamily housing complex there. And they've got a grass area next to their parking lot where we could site this vault and just have a minimal impact on that property. They're not going to lose anything that's currently used there. There's another view of that spot. So we place the vault in that grassy area. We could access that from that one park parking spot that's just to the west there. So we've already had a surveyor go out and get a topographic survey, a boundary survey of this location. And and they've provided a a map here that shows the easement area that we were looking to acquire. It's approximately thirty feet by forty feet for a total of twelve hundred square feet. So just just trying to to right-size that piece where we would get the easement, not have too much of an impact. And so what we're asking you to do is consider adopting a resolution of need. At that point, we would start negotiations with the property owner. We've got a right-of-way acquisition consultant onboard that's that's going to help us. They send out a standardized packet of information called a general information notice. So that would go to the property owner if the board chooses to adopt a resolution tonight. And we would we would begin those negotiations with them and then move on to the engineering and design phase of the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Questions?
This is Jim Downe. Do we have any indication from the property owner that they're going to be having a hissy fit? Or this all fits in with their overall plan?
Yeah, good question, Commissioner Downe. So we're actually, we're taking this step before we reach out to them. So we're asking the board to consider this, and and that's on the recommendation of our property consultant, that we start with this step and then begin those conversations. So I so I don't have an answer to that yet. Hopefully, by the next board meeting, I'd be able to provide an update.
Thank you.
This is Sarah. Can you guys hear me in the room?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah. Sarah's our engineering manager.
Yeah, Commissioner Downe, that's a great question. And I do have an update from our consultant on that. They have reached out to the property owner, and he is interested in participating and letting us purchase an easement from him. So what his number will be, that that'll come to fruition once we have an appraisal.
There's the latest info. Thank you, Sarah.
Welcome.
I move to accept the resolution for the property of need on Meadow Drive.
Okay, well, a second is a little bit good.
Wait a second.
So all in favor of adopting resolution number twenty-two twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Now we will move to item D, request the annexation of sixty-eight fifteen Northeast Shaft or Shaft.
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 Shaft Street.
Many options. All right, thank you, President Fisher and commissioners. So I will jump right in. So what this is, is we have a property owner who has requested that the board support an annexation into the district. The property is listed as six-one-eight-five Northeast Shaft Street in Hillsborough. This is just north of Highway twenty-six, near the very northwest corner of our service area. The property owner is QTS Hillsborough Three LLC. And like I said, they've requested annexation. They did that back in November. This property has already been annexed into the UGB by Metro. It's been annexed into the city of Hillsborough, so this is this is part of the city up north, even though we'll be the water provider for it. And it's been annexed into Clean Water Services. So the Water District is kind of the last entity that will that will need to do an annexation process in order to provide service. And in order for them to be annexed into the into the district, the board would need to endorse that. Here's the map. Like I said, we're up in the northwest corner of of our service area. But we do have infrastructure already in place that can serve this location. Little closer viewpoint, so Highway twenty-six, you can see running just through this area diagonally. And then that's Helvacia Road just west of there. We're zooming in further. So you can see the blue lines on the on the map there indicate where we already have water lines. And they're in the vicinity. So here's an aerial of that site now. It it is currently developed as just a single-family residence. But this is about a six-acre lot, so a pretty large parcel here. It's got a few outbuildings, and historically, they used a domestic well for their water service, and they haven't had a connection to the system yet. But we do have infrastructure there to serve them. There's a twelve-inch line there in Shaft Street that's fairly new, just a couple of years old. So no other required improvements for district infrastructure related to this, just the service connection. And as you might recall, last year in May, we endorsed the annexation for properties surrounding this. And so this was was just another parcel then that was acquired at a later time by the the property owner here that did the the original annexation. And our development services group has been talking to this owner that owns all of these parcels about their their development plans. So we expect to see some activity there very soon. So no budget impact related to this, although they will contribute system development charges when when their development comes through that process. So are there any questions from the board?
Oh, I did have one. On on the the map, there are a number of other little holes and islands in the vicinity. Do we expect that? Yeah, that there's some disconnects there. The the larger map was showing some some other holes. Are are we expecting perhaps those other property owners to maybe now that they're in the urban growth boundary to require service? Or are they still served by wells? Just out of curiosity.
Good question, and and Sarah may have more information than I do about what what we currently know about future development there. So is Sarah, is that the case?
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely answer that. So what we know right now is the city of Hillsborough is actively marketing this area as developable land. And as developers are interested in this, I think we'll see a lot more coming into the area, especially in the tech industry and manufacturing, just based off of the existing folks that have built developments in this area. As they come in, we will endorse the areas as they ask for endorsement. We don't currently have plans to do a blanket endorsement of this area just because many of these are still farmlands that are served by wells. But some of the areas that you see on here have talked to us in the past, and they just haven't moved forward with their application for annexation yet.
I was curious about the one little area of Helvacia Road that seems to be an island that was endorsed under oh-seven-twenty-three that's kind of sitting out there as a
Yeah, I'm not sure how that one ended up in there. I asked Matt Palmer, our development services engineer, what was going on with that. And I think it's something that the city of Hillsborough required, and maybe they're looking at doing intersection improvements there, and that's why it was included under that resolution. Generally, when we annex new parcels into the district, we require them to annex the right-of-way as well, just so we don't have gaps in our service area.
This was wondering, is it's not connected to anything? It's northeast, another Po- Pobias Street?
Yeah.
Po- Po- Po Boys Street, Po Boil Street? Yeah, I just, it it the the boundary, I I hate unresolved boundaries and and it it just just, I I was curious about why that little island was sitting up there way on the the upper left.
Yeah, it's it's as much a mystery to me as it is to use. So when we get a chance to clean things up, we'll endeavor to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? So I'd like to move to recommend requests for annexation for sixty-eight fifteen Northeast CHA F Street.
A second.
All those in favor, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion passes. And Justin? What's happening again?
President Fisher, commissioners, so the agenda has my name on it, but we wanted to maintain the balance of Justin and Pete presentations tonight. So I did insist on top billing for this, but people will be co-presenting with me. So you'll recall at the work session earlier this month, we brought to you some information about the community development block grant opportunities that are offered by Washington County. And they're currently accepting projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. At the time, we mentioned that an application process would require a board resolution supporting the application. The engineering group did land on a particular project that we were able to recommend and go forward with. And we've submitted a letter of interest on that project known as the Todd Street and Lynn Avenue Area Replacements Project. So the letter of interest has been submitted. That particular project, as far as meeting the objectives that are required under the national program, was focused on activities benefiting low and moderate income persons. So based on the analysis, we were able to look at this and determine that that area had an income level of fifty, of low to moderate income residents, so fifty-five point had an income level of fifty, uh of a low to moderate income residents of fifty-five point nine percent. So that was what was used as the determining factor and and looking at this project. And I will turn it over to Pete to talk more about the project specifics.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, just a couple more hours. All right, so here's a map of this area. You can see uh Murray Boulevard to the east of of our target area and highway twenty-six just to the north, just to to orient yourself. So um, we call this Todd Linda. Those are the names of the streets and um talk a little bit more about why this project makes sense. Um, so it's a fairly large area in terms of mains replacement. We're talking about a whole neighborhood here. Um, almost one point seven million dollars worth of work. Um, and we've been looking at this area for a while for replacement in a couple of different reasons. So so one, the age of the pipe, it was developed in the fifties, this neighborhood was. And those were the days of cast iron pipe. And they were also the days of lead and oakum as a joint material. So um, there's, it's, it's probably not the most resilient of materials. So it's brittle, uh it does tend to break um more so than the ductile iron and it and it fractures is is kind of the typical break mechanism. Uh, the condition of this pipe uh has led us to believe that it's it's at the end of its life. And over the past twenty years, we've seen thirteen breaks in this area. So that's that's kind of a um a higher than normal uh rate of breakage. So we're looking about forty-four hundred feet of pipe, both four and six inch, that'll be replaced with paintage. So we'll have more fire flow capacity in this in this area after we're done. Uh, we'll replace some older two-port hydrants with three ports. The two ports are generally the the small connections um and our our modern fire service likes the big ones with with the big steam report in the front. And with the larger pipe, we'll be able to accommodate that. Um, so here's what that twenty-year break history looks like. Um, it's uh in in this area. So you can imagine every one of these was disruptive to the residents, right? So um, even though a lot of this pipeline is what we call behind curve, it's out of the paved area. Uh, so so sometimes those repairs are are a little easier, a little less disruptive. Uh, but for the home that we're right in front of, it feels like we're in their front yard. We diggle. Um, so we we always do a good job of putting that back, but it's disruptive when it happens. It might cause flooding. It might uh cause some property damage. And so uh, this is definitely a candidate to be replaced. It's been on our list for a while, like I mentioned. Um, just hasn't risen quite to that uh highest priority yet because we frankly have have areas where we need to uh replace the pipes that are that are even more of a risk. And so uh with this grant, if if we get it, uh we'll be able to move this project up and get a designer and a contractor on board to to replace this and have one last disruption in this neighborhood, but then hopefully not be back for a long time. So staff is asking you to adopt a resolution um that would authorize us to apply for this grant and for CEO Matthews to uh to sign that. Uh, the deadline for application is January tenth, which is before the next time we all meet. Uh, so we're hoping that uh you'll support this, take action tonight, and and we'll continue with that application and and get it in after the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if there's hard ones, I'll have Sarah to jump on again.
Not seen any questions. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-four, twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the district to apply for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six community grant? I'll move. A second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. Excellent project. We will now move into action items from executive session. Do I have a motion and a second? That effective January first, twenty twenty-five, the annual salary in section five CEO employment agreement is increased to two hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and one and sixty cents. And the HR director and general counsel will prepare all documents necessary to implement this action. And the board president is authorized to execute them on behalf of the board.
So moved.
A second? Sorry, Billy. The motion has uh been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. Do I have a motion and a second that the board accept the settlement agreement with CH two M and GSI and authorize the CEO to execute all necessary documents?
So moved.
A second? The move is seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The motion passes. And that, ladies and gentlemen, means we are also adjourned for the night.